Okay, we are live on YouTube now.
We have enough.
Yes, we do. We have eight plus the mayor, that's nine.
Hi Randy.
Hey Kerry.
How you doing?
All right, all right.
Good.
All right. Seven o'clock Domingo, it's your call, whenever you, if you want to wait a minute or whatever.
All right. Now, we'll, we'll start, I'll just make this one brief comment, this address to all of us, that we need to be nice and loud and clear, so when you give a statement, if you can be nice and loud and clear, and if I have to read something, or if the city clerk or anybody else needs to read something to be, read it slowly, so this way it's, they can hear it. On June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, the governor of Illinois issued a statewide disaster declaration related to public health concerns. As head of this body, I have determined that an in-person meeting, or a meeting otherwise conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act is neither practical, nor prudent because of the disaster. This meeting will be conducted by internet teleconference without the physical presence of a quorum. Prior to commencement of this meeting, all members of this body were verified and can be seen and heard and hear one another. I further find that the physical presence of members of the public is not feasible at this meeting due to the disaster, and more specifically, the practical difficulties associated with accommodating the public in an accessible hygienic location that allows for appropriate social distancing. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussion in roll call votes live on the city's official website, on Facebook, and via Zoom teleconference. Notice of these arrangements have been given in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The public may address this body consistent with the rules previously adopted and recorded and is adopted by mayoral order. Alderman Bill Farrenwall, a member of this body, is physically present at our regular meeting location. All votes shall be conducted by roll call, and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Mister City Clerk, could you read the heading, please?
Yes. This is the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Blue Island held remotely on Tuesday, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty at seven PM, as permitted by Executive Order twenty-twenty oh seven, signed by Illinois Governor, David Fitch, on March sixteen, twenty-twenty, in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Participate remotely, download the Zoom app, or call three-one-two-six-two-six-six-seven-nine-nine. The city council meeting webinar ID is eight-four-nine-one-six-eight-zero-seven-four-four-three, with a password of one-two-four-one-four-four.
We're gonna call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty.
Justice for all. Could, Mister City Clerk, could I have roll call, please?
Sure. Rita. Rita Absinthe, Donahue. Donahue, Absinthe, Holly.
Here.
Holly, here, Farrenwall.
Here.
Farrenwall, here, Hill.
Here.
Hill, here, Mac.
Here.
Mac, here, Carr. Carr, Absinthe, Zelman.
Here.
Here, Clanker.
I'm here.
Clanker, here, Stevo.
Here.
Stevo, here, Johnson. Johnson, Absinthe, Alexander.
Here.
Alexander, here, Bellato.
Here.
Bellato, here, Casadus. Casadus, Absinthe. I'm present, Your Honor.
Thank you much, now we'll move on to number four. Presentation of general proceedings, I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of September the eighth, twenty-twenty, I need a motion in a second, please.
Alderman, Holly, a move.
Do I have a second?
Alderman, Mac.
Thank you very much to both, if no questions, I'll need a roll call, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Farrenwall.
Aye.
Farrenwall, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clanker.
Aye.
Clanker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mister City Clerk, could you read number five, please?
Sure, public comment shall be by email only. Person interested in making a public comment must email a public comment to ourhoseur@cityofblueisland.org by September twenty-second, twenty-twenty at six PM. Email a public comment received will be read during the public comment portion of the meeting by City Clerk Randy Houser.
Thanks very much, we move on to, any, any, any report?
We didn't have one public comment from Carol DePace Green.
Okay.
Together hashtag, we're the strong ones to thank our September twenty-twenty donors, Mayor Domingo Vargas, Alderman Fred Bellato, and Alderman Ryan Cantello Zelman, who attempted to donate items that were paid for by someone else, and delivered by Alderman Zelman, Alderman Johnny Hill, Alderman Jack Victor Johnson, Alderman Alan Stevo, retired Alderman Nancy Thompson, Harris Walker Thomas, Canada for State Representative, twenty-eighth district, Sanji Brooks, Angelo Green, Mason Johnson, Patty Maroney, Blue Island Public Library, Eisenhower High School, Marshall Lee and Tommy Lee Memorial Fund, Bella Reyes, Alex Smith, Bridget Smith, Victoria Torres, and the brainstorming warehouse, who donated to our September twelfth event. Special thank you to numerous volunteers, apology in advance to anyone who may have been forgotten. Together, hashtag Blue Island Strong, we'll distribute face masks, gloves, hand sanitizer, and food at Eisenhower High School, Saturday at a couple seventeen twenty-twenty, from ten-thirty AM to twelve-thirty PM, while supplies last. All are welcome to participate, pick up, donate, volunteer, and share information.
Anything else?
That is all today.
Thank you, we move on to number six, report of city officials. I'm happy to report on the following people or names that I'm gonna read out, our full-time firefighters with the city of Blue Island, Mister Daniel White, Anthony Parrillo, Trevor Noonan, was sworn in as full-time firefighters. Regarding number two, and I leave that again to community development and you all as aldermen regarding Halloween hours, you wanna have a little bit of a discussion as to that, or is there a consensus as to the time?
Mayor, Bellato here, I, I'd say we, we do the regular time, we always do, with the recommendations that came from the health, health official and,
Okay.
But out, I, I don't know if they were put out publicly just yet, but I know I'm part of an email chain with the recommendations with the CDC in trick-or-treating.
Fine, that's fine.
If I may, also.
Go ahead.
In our, L.A. Municipal League Newsletter, or whatever, that came out yesterday, IML is waiting for guidance from the governor, so I, I mean, I, I don't know what everyone feels if they, they want to do something outside of that, or wait, or whatever, but it just, I just, I bring your attention so as to know you have.
Well, I'll leave it up to the council, if you wanna set the time, and then we can decide whether it's gonna go forward or not.
Alderman Farrenwall, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you, I understand, you know, that we're looking at, at having, you know, permitting trick-or-treating, and I have no overall objection to that, provided the right guidelines are followed, however, I live on Greenwood, and last year, we had eight hundred trick-or-treaters at our door, and I know others have more, I don't know what, if anything can be done about it, but Greenwood, that area is kind of a special case, and it's, it's a problem, and then just in terms of the COVID, it's not a problem, otherwise, great event, everyone's wonderful. And I don't have a good suggestion frankly about it, but it, it is an issue.
Okay.
This is.
I, I agree with Alderman Farrenwall, I'm always at my brother's house and trick-or-treat, and it's thousands of people, candy he goes through, you know, and, and they don't come up one at a time with their parents, they come up with like groups of people. I don't know how to.
Yeah, I, I hope, I hope a lot of crowding that goes on.
Uh, this is Jim Clinker, just, just, I don't know if anyone saw the article in today's trip, but the CDC is considering trick-or-treating a high risk, and recommending against it, that came out today, so, just throwing that out there, and I agree with both Alderman and Farrenwall, and Cantello Zelman, because I get a lot of that same overflow on my block, I think I had fourteen hundred pieces of candy last year, so, I, you know. That's, that's my.
So, October, is that the decision?
Hi, this is Alderman Hill, what I did last year for trick-or-treating wars, I went out with my assistant, and the person who was helping me, we had candy inside of the bags, already enclosed, we had on gloves, and, and I can think possibly masks, so I don't, that's, I think that's the way it kinda should be done this year.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman, so again, would you wanna set hours, and then we wait to see what the CDC and what the governor suggests?
Uh, Mayor, I would agree with that, this is Alderman Bellato, I would agree with setting the hours, and like I was saying earlier, depending on what CDC guidelines are, and I'm sure.
If that's, if that's a consensus, I think we can go that, unless you want it, should we do a roll call on that? Let's do a roll call on that.
Yeah, someone need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the same hours we have, I think it's what, three to seven, Mayor?
Correct.
Yes, yes, it is.
Three to seven, pending any CDC recommendations, they would supersede that.
That's fine, that's good, that's, that's the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Hill. All right, thank you, we'll need a roll call, please.
Can I, Jim Clinker, just a quick question?
Sure.
So, if, if, I, I mean, I just, I've just read you what CDC said, they're saying it's a high, high risk, and we probably shouldn't do it. I, I'm just looking at, you know, if we vote yes on this, it's gonna go, is what it sounds like to me. Maybe we could, I don't know, Fred, if we can amend it to yes, and we can revisit it two weeks from now and make a final decision then, as far as whether we're doing it or not? I have no issue with that. This article just came out today, it's the Tribune, it talks about. I, I, I have no issue with amending my motion. So, and trick-or-treats are high risk, attending costume parties are high risk, there's a whole list of them, that came out from the CDC just today. So, I, I mean, if the motion's gonna be, we're approving three to seven, and we're gonna revisit it in two weeks and make a final decision, I'm good with that, if it's just gonna.
Yes.
All right, so Fred.
That's what, that's what the motion is, correct.
I'm amending it to your, or what you just changed it to, we'll prove the times, and revisit it in the next city council.
But we're gonna have it on the agenda the next.
Yeah.
You know, don't forget about it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that okay, is that okay with Alderman Hill, for that amendment? Johnny.
Hello?
Are, are you, are you okay with the amendment?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right, there you go, Mayor.
So then we'll need a roll call, please.
Okay, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Farrenwall.
Aye.
Farrenwall, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clanker.
Aye.
Clanker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, number three is just for clarification, I don't know if you all know that Mister Howard Capari has been working very, very hard, very dedicated with the FEMA, in the COVID situation, and trying to get other things in order for us here in the city, so the reason why, it's not a reorganization per se, it's just that he's gonna be in charge, dedicating himself to zoning and planning, and Mister Ahmed Sandino will be in charge of whatever issues happening in the building department from here on. Again, for efficiency, accountability, and transparency. On number four, on my announcements, I wanna wish everyone and recognize and acknowledge Hispanic Heritage Month, again, it started since September the fifteenth, and it goes a whole month to October the fifteenth. Besides supporting all of our local businesses, please support any Hispanic or Latino business again, and, and, and their culture. We want, again, as we've been repeating, we want everyone to continue following the CDC and, and the governor's guidelines. It's essential for us to keep moving forward, especially today, that we started the first day of fall, that we keep that in mind. Winter is unfortunately just around the corner, so we need to continue following the guidelines. I don't know if you read, Wisconsin is now on the quarantine list in the city of Chicago, so again, let's keep that in mind, I wanna thank everyone who was at present at the Blessing of the Waters on Sunday. We had a, a good group out there, and, and good representation of the community was out there with the Blessing of the Waters. And I wanna thank all the volunteers who've helped clean up the SEPA station recently, with the plants, the flowers, and, and the actual paths, as well as some of the parking lots here and around Blue Island. Regarding the, the parking lots, if you haven't noticed, the parking lot, Metro Parking Lot on one-hundred nineteenth and Vincent's has been seal-coated, re-seal-coated, and striped. They'll be doing the same thing to the one right behind the old client's building, next to the post office, so that's what's happening there, as you heard, Miss Carol DePace Green's message, we wanna thank everyone for coming out and supporting the food drive and the mask giveaway, and sanitation giveaway on September the twentieth at Eisenhower. Again, a very, it was rainy, but we had a lot of troopers out there giving out all the necessary equipment. I have good news, we were a little bit short on some money for the demolition of the buildings at one-hundred nineteenth and Vincent's. Mister Miller informed me two days ago that we got the additional money from the county, so the project will continue going, and you will be seeing some progress with the demolition and remediation of that area within the next couple of weeks. Again, I wanna thank sincerely the Blue Island Police Department for the work within this last week. We had some very dangerous situations in and around our community. None of our officers were injured, we did call out in two times the helicopter to assist for searches. Some people were taken into custody in the first incident, and more information, they're still working on the second incident, happened just a couple of days ago. Again, we wanna thank the Blue Island Police Department and all the surrounding agencies that assisted one another. Regarding the Advisory Board for Justice, we're trying to coordinate a meeting in October, and we're trying to get all the parties together as soon as we can get them together, and we'll notify everyone of the date. City Clerk, any business?
Uh, no business, I just wanna let you know though that, that's in this environment.
Thank you very much, any bits?
No bits.
We'll move on to City Treasurer, his business, we'll need a motion for the approval of inter-fund transfers from unrestricted to restricted accounts. I'll need a motion in a second, if, no, there's no any, there's no question.
Bellato motions.
Do I have a second?
On a question.
Thank you.
Add a question?
No questions, I need a, a roll call.
Add a question?
Yes, sir, Alderman.
Uh, now, the, the total transfers were one-hundred twenty-seven thousand, one-hundred twenty-one dollars, ninety-one cents?
That's from my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
If no other questions, I'll need a roll call.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Farrenwall.
Aye.
Farrenwall, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clanker.
Aye.
Clanker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
No.
Absinthe, no, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, nine ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you, now we move on to cash collections restraint report, do we need a motion, or no?
No.
No? Okay, and then treasurer's announcements, I have none, and we move on to city attorney, any business?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, committee reports, committee development.
All right, Mayor, I got August and September minutes here, we met on August nineteenth, twenty-twenty, at seven PM. I, Alderman Bellato brought up his frustration with the new bike lanes on Vermont Street. The city is aware that they were laid out more than ten years ago, however, they feel to be unsafe and dangerous. They also limit the parking of some residents who do not have dry, or garages. The committee tasked Eric Alvarez from Robinson Engineering to look into if we can move the route into the residential streets without creating too much infrastructure, and he was gonna look into some proposals of cost, and he agreed it would be minimum if we can do it. I proposed alternate route along James Street to take it off the most dangerous section of Vermont between roughly Stony to the post office area. Under new business, we approved the motion by Cantello, second by Bellato, to approve the parking variance for the property located in nineteen sixty-four Vermont Street. The committee had concerns that there will be issues of cars parking in the neighborhoods, however, they agreed to a six-month review, once it's open, to review how the parking situation is going, all eyes motion carried. Motion by Bellato, second by Gazaras, to approve the special use of leased property on one-on-one Southwestern Avenue for the new business of Tyers R. Russ. The committee had many concerns over storing cars on the frontage overnight, signage, and overall aesthetic of the building. Alderman Bellato recommended we include an additional stipulation of not allowing any cars outside of their building to be stored overnight, also additional lighting, all eyes motion carried. Motion by Cantello, second by Gazaras, to approve the purchase of thirty-two new garbage receptacles for the business district through Dotty Concrete. All eyes motion carried, and since then, I've walked from one-hundred ninth to one-hundred thirty-fifth, placing ten of locations with the majority of it north of one-hundred twenty-seventh, and a few on Old Western, because none exists in those two sections at the top, while remaining the old ones, from one-hundred twenty-seventh to Grove, at least most of the old ones, until we can get another purchase down the road. Asked the two big community volunteers that are out there picking up garbage on a regular basis their opinion, and both sending me a few addresses to add to the list. Motion by Cantello, second by Mac, to approve the purchase of four bike repair stations to be placed along the business district, all eyes motion carried. Motion by Bellato, second by Gazaras, to approve the RFP presented by the Blue Island Arts Alliance to coordinate a mural program at the Oldies Eagle Gas Station that we recently cleared, all eyes motion carried. Motion by Bellato, second by Cantello, to approve a mural located on the east wall of the building, located one-on-one Broadway, it's the Hidalgo Meat Market. All eyes motion carried, motion by Gazaras, second by Bellato, to approve a business grant application for the future coffee shop located at twenty-four, twenty-one Grove Street for new windows and tuck pointing, all eyes motion carried. Motion by Gazaras, second by Cantello, to approve a business grant application for edible passport located one-thirty zero zero Western Avenue for a new awning, all eyes motion carried. Motion by Holly, second by Gazaras, to approve the new gooseneck lighting and signage for the Family Dollar located at one-thirty fifty-four Southwestern Avenue. They're moving into the old doll up location, the old Walgreens location of Vermont and Western, and it'll be a big improvement for that corner. The committee was adamantly against painting of the limestone frontage, I made sure to put that in the minutes here. All eyes motion carried. Motion by Bellato, second by Holly, to table the puff and stuff business application, pending more information. Motion by Gazaras, second by Mac, to table both motions as a concern to Cook County Health Center, one-twenty-seven seventy-nine Western Avenue, all eyes motion carried. Sarah Brown gave the marketing report, there was no additional business. September ninth meeting, Alderman Bellato brought up the terrible look of the rain gardens along, along what avenue? He met with residents there who want them cut down and trimmed, there was a motion by Bellato, second by Cantello, to have Public Works dispatched for a cleanup, that is still pending review. Alderman Bellato brought up his frustration with many buy-home signs being posted throughout the city on poles and trees up in the air, where residents cannot easily get them and take them down. The building department has a vested contact and is working on finding if possible. Since then, after many discussions with the medicine, I have kinda taken it upon myself to take them down, I've got sixteen in my van alone right now, and if you send me a location, I've got a ladder constantly in back of my van, and I'll grab it next time I drive past it. So if any alderman sees one, and they can't get it down themselves, send me a dress or intersection, I'll get it down. Alderman Bellato proposed, if possible, the showing of Halloween cartoons, movies, or events on Channel Four on Halloween. The library has volunteered to work with Ben Tamara to put something together, I believe Marisol and Anna from the library and Ben are working on this. Was a part of an email change between them. Under new business, motion by Bellato, second by Cantello, to approve a business grant application for Takira Jalisco, one-twenty-two fifty Western Avenue for a new awning. The committee recommended a canvas to be used instead of vinyl, a straight-type canopy instead of the bubble, bubble one that's there now, and exterior gooseneck lighting, pending those recommended changes, the committee voted, motion carried. Motion by Bellato, second by Alexander, to approve the business grant application for a new wanting of windows, the Blue Island Travel Agency, one-twenty-eight sixty Western Avenue. This is basically replacing the awning they have there, and also some window, Bow Wow's location in the rear. Motion by Cantello, second by Holly, to approve the reimbursement of the business development grant application for Michael's Hair Salon at one-twenty-seven twenty-one Western Avenue, that was already, that was approved, and it's on the accounts payable for tonight. Puff and stuff was also tabled again, pending additional information, Eric Alvarez talked about the Cal Sag, and is still working on a price for the trail. Motion by Gazaras, second by Cantello, to approve the Cook County Health Center monuments located at one-twenty-seven seventy-nine Western Avenue, all eyes motion carried. Motion by Bellato, second by Gazaras, to approve Cook County Health to install light pole banners in the directly to the south of their building, all eyes motion carried. Motion by Bellato, second by Cantello, to approve residential parking in certain sections of the Uptown Business District, Mary Oak Walnut Union, New Street, York Street, High Street. Alderman Bellato will walk and send the exact addresses to the judiciary municipal committees, all eyes motion carried. It's on the agenda tonight with an additional, by Alderman Stevo, a street that I missed, the east side of Gregory has also been added to that, and it was said in multiple committees that this is a starting phase, if it needs to be extended to Maple on the west end, or extended on the east end, it's easily done once we pass the original motion, and that's under, I think, judiciary later on in the meeting. Ahmed Sandino provided the billing department report, Sarah Brown gave a marketing report. Our next meeting is going to be October fourteenth, if anybody has agenda items, please send them to me, I'll put a list together and then send them to Ahmed Sandino. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman, thank you very much for detailed committee reports, finance committee.
Um, I'll run with it, finance committee, we have a motion to approve payroll for September fourth for the amount of three-hundred fifty thousand, one-hundred eleven dollars and two cents.
You got a motion, do you have a second?
Second, I'll buy Alderman Hill.
All right, if no questions, I'll need a roll call.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Farrenwall.
Aye.
Farrenwall, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye, Zelman. Zelman, aye, Clanker.
Aye.
Clanker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson. Johnson on the payroll.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have motion for accounts payable for September twenty-third, twenty-twenty, and the amount, and it's a adjusted amount off here, a thousand dollars was left off, three-hundred and thirty-two thousand, three-hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents, so it's one thousand less than what's on the agenda.
All right, you got a motion, we need a second?
Farrenwall, second, and I, I had a question.
Go ahead.
On page ten of the, of payables, there's payable for Montana and Welch in the amount of four thousand, seven-hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. I'd like it removed and re, brought up for reconsideration at the following meeting for two reasons. One, there is no detail on this, on this amount, and we've been told we would get detail. And second, probably more importantly, as I understand it, we are now beyond our appropriation for litigation services, and this, we have, we're gonna have to change the appropriation, I guess, before we can do any more of these payables.
I can answer a couple of those questions, Mayor.
Go ahead.
All right, on the, the larger amount, that was a January accounts payable, he emailed it to us in July, part of the rest of the accounts payable weren't paid in the July statement, so it was missed in our last discussions on this, and this was also brought up in finance, and answered by Topeka that it was sent to the alderman, the entire city council received it. The five-hundred dollar bill is the only thing from the last month or so, last few months. So that was answered at.
Okay, thank you.
And the other one with the, the other question for a litigation, litigation amount hasn't reached its cap under the risk management, that is, there's room there, and when it came into the finance committee, and I think Kerry can, and I brought up that there was some stuff that was billed to the wrong line item, so we have not reached our cap yet.
All right, thank you. Then I, then I just would just like to just point out, I will vote in favor of the payables, given what Alderman Bellato has told us, but I would.
Uh, given what Alderman Bellato has told us, but I would like to point out that the previous city council meeting. Uh, myself, Alderman Holly, Alderman Stevo and Alderman Johnson voted to um end our uh unnecessary services with Montana and Welch and Ackerman. And we are overruled by the best of city council, so uh it is required that we we uh pay this, but I uh do so with uh some regret.
So we got a motion? We have a second? Roll call, please.
Holly. Uh, on the, on the accounts payable, Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Theronwell.
Hi.
Theronwell, hi, Hill.
Hi.
Hill, hi, Mac.
Hi.
Mac, hi, Zelman. Zelman, hi, Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi, Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi, Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi, Bellato. Bellato, hi, nine i's and one no.
Thank you.
Right, next I have number three, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero three five. An ordinance of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois approving intergovernmental agreement between the state of Illinois Department. Uh, Blue Island for participation in fiscal year twenty twenty-one sustained traffic enforcement program step grant. It passed the finance committee just last night. There's a timeline on it. I don't have all the details on it, but it's good for the city. And it just passed last night unanimously. And if another alderman that was there that would have more information that wants to talk or if any alderman has more questions. Hopefully they can answer, uh, because the chairman's not on tonight, but it's uh coming from the Blue Island Police Department, so I'll make a motion.
Got it. Got a motion? Do we need to have a second?
Theronwell, second.
Nick, thank you.
Any question? Question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Did our city attorney, Kerry Horvath, review this?
I believe it came from.
Alderman Stevo, yeah, yes, I did review it and the grant is for what's called the sustained traffic enforcement program. It comes from the Illinois Department of Transportation and the uh, you know, it allows for the payment of overtime of approximately five hundred hours of overtime for the police department. The total amount of the grant is is thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars and 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 some change. And yes, I did in fact review the intergovernmental agreement and it is a good program that the police department requested that it be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for uh explaining that. Thank you very much.
If no other questions, I need a roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Theronwell.
Hi.
Theronwell, hi, Hill.
Hi.
Hill, hi, Mac.
Hi.
Mac, hi, Zelman.
Hi.
Zelman, hi, Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi, Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi, ten i, if you're ready.
Thank you very much.
All right, next we have number four, resolution twenty twenty dash zero four zero. A resolution appointing authorized agent to act on behalf of the city of Blue Island with respect to all official business concerning the I M R F fund. I believe it's our finance director, Topeka, correct, Mayor?
That is correct, yes, that is correct.
I'll, I'll make a motion on that.
Okay, do we have a second?
Clinker.
Alderman Hill, second, please.
All right, uh, I think Mr. Clinker beat, Alderman Clinker beat you, but uh if no questions, I need a roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Theronwell.
Hi.
Theronwell, hi, Hill.
Hi.
Hill, hi, Mac.
Hi.
Mac, hi, Zelman. Zelman, hi, Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi, Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, ten i, if you're ready.
Thank you very much, thank you.
All right, number five, we have resolution twenty twenty dash zero four one, a resolution authorizing an insurance contract with Kinseal Insurance Company. And Starstone National Insurance Company for primary excess liability insurance for the city of Blue Island for property leased from the Metropolitan Reclamation District of Greater Chicago. And this is also directly related also number six, but we have to do these separately, I believe. This is for for the leased acreage along the Cal SAG and includes and it's roughly the same amount as last year. Um, the original amount was was three or four times. Um, I don't know if the mayor knew about that or not, but we tabled it, sent it back for finance to try to get better rate or or threaten pulling it all together and then they came back with pretty much the same amount as last year.
Well, thank you very much, thank you. So we got a motion? Do we have a second?
Any question?
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, uh, Alderman Bellato. Uh, was this put out to bid? Were any other insurance companies allowed to bid on this?
So it was handled directly by our finance department. I believe they got quotes from different companies, but that would be answered by them. It was totally handled by the uh finance department, uh, Topeka.
If I may, if I may interject just briefly, this, this Kerry Horvath. Alderman Stevo, the, the uh agent for the city, Aliant Mesero, did put it out. We had ten companies that presented proposals or were or declined, but it was, it was submitted. The initially the premium submitted was eighteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars for the type of insurance we required, but because the finance director was able to negotiate with the M W R D and allow for self-insurance for the bike path itself. The premium was then reduced from eighteen thousand, four sixty-four to fifty-one twenty-five. Uh, so y- yes, it was put out to to for proposals, not by the city itself, but by the city's insurance. Um, the agency that represents the city with respect to its insurance. And the finance committee also insisted that we attempt to renegotiate the rate by using self-insurance for a portion of the liability insurance.
And I'd like to add to that, that's, that's gotta be done and the committee again reinstated their feelings last night. Um, we need to renegotiate the lease with M W R D. I just stating my own personal opinion, but I think it's some other alderman believe that too, since the entire lease has, is within my ward boundaries. We're not getting the right end of the stick on the deal here. We're required to maintain a lot of property. And we still have to ask permission for every little thing we do, the handling of the bios farm. That was handled terribly because of the lease, the maintenance of what we can maintain, what we cannot maintain. The, 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 just the gray areas within the lease, this should be renegotiated. This is not, the city is not getting any benefit of leasing this land as of right now.
Uh, Alderman Theronwell, so we got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second and I have a question, Alderman Theronwell.
Go ahead.
All right, so um could I just, I'd like to understand a little bit better about the um exclusion on the, on the um self-insurance. Uh, it, this is, the, I guess I don't understa- a couple of things I don't understand. Remember, we've been, we have been insured previously for this without um uh, as self-insured?
So I can answer a little bit about this. Um, they didn't know about the trail um at the last couple of years, even though a portion of the trail has been there for two years now. They didn't know about it until now and they're saying they don't want to cover the trail. What other towns along the Cal SAG have done, they've done the same thing. It's just under their, it's open space, like, like, um, I forgot how the word they used, but it's open space. They now because uh trail, they're treating it like a park, like, like a playground and they want to the double or triple the rate on the low end and it was only one person, I think, even bid and it was kind of like for, it's just blacktop. There's no playground equipment or nothing, but they, they don't understand how it's just adding blacktop to open space that is not fenced off now, how that would change the liability. So I believe Topeka talked to the legal um from M W R D along with Attorney Horvath and this was the solution.
Well, I, well, my concern is that, yeah, it is a piece of asphalt, but it is a piece of asphalt that people bicycle on. And if two bikes collide and somehow we're at fault, uh, we're gonna wind up paying for that?
Yeah, that, that, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, Alderman, um.
Well, Alderman, Alderman, I'd like to say they, they, it's M W R D property and it's a, it's liability. So it's like just no, no bar, no more than someone falling down on a sidewalk. Every single sidewalk in town, we don't have insurance on, you know, and.
Well, I, I under- I understand that and I, and I'm not real happy about that fact either and I am pretty much opposed to the city picking up any additional liability. And I realize these rates are a lot higher uh for to have liability, for to have liability, but I, I can't vote for this uh, if we're gonna be self-insured on this as well. I, I just can't do it.
Alderman, I, I didn't want to vote for it at all either, so eh, I might just join you with this vote because uh I was hesitant on even bringing it up. But I'm not the chair, the, the stuff on the agenda, but I was, and the other members of the committee, I went on a tirade on the entire process, so.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we get some more information before we vote on it tonight?
Well, the thing is, um, is that is basically the, the bike path is, was what, what was causing the issue. And like Alderman Bellato had mentioned, it was about the deal that we got with M D W R. And it's not always fair to us as a city of Blue Island and it hasn't been for quite a while, a lot of things, especially with maintenance, clean, you know, and cleaning up and security. But we're, we're in a catch twenty-two with it because we don't, it's a, it's a time basis on it, so we had to vote on it.
Well, the, the city, just, just, just so all are aware, the city is required by the lease with the M W R D to provide the liability insurance and what the M W R D allowed was to self, if the city wanted to just keep its premium where it was, the M W R D allowed the city to accept the responsibility for the bike path. But it's part of our lease with them. Uh, that lease has been in effect for, I guess, a large number of years. And, or a long number of years, excuse me. And so in order to continue using that path, we have to either provide insurance or provide self-insurance. And so that's where the negotiation uh took place between uh, finance and the um law firm or the lawyer for the M W R D, general counsel for the M W R D.
Yeah, I, 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 this Alderman Theronwell, I appreciate that and I understand the desire to keep the premium down, but I, I I, I mean, it's ten thousand dollars more and more that, that to have it being, you know, to, so that it covers us, but I think the risks are actually pretty high and uh we can't afford another lawsuit.
I think it was actually thirteen thousand. I, I'm concerned as well about not having the, the, the trail not being covered. Did somebody say that there were other cities that have the trail that is doing the same thing with the self-insurance? Actually, Alderman, the, most other municipalities have li- liability, some form of liability insurance. Whereas the city of Blue Island does not have liability insurance. Most other cities in, then, once they are required or villages, once they're required to insure their portion of the bike trail. Probably include it with an endorsement and, and quite frankly, probably have an additional premium as well. That's added to their main liability insurance policy. Un- unlike the city of Blue Island where when you have to insure something, you do not have a main uh comprehensive liability insurance policy, so you, you must insure the, the specific property in question. Such as Metra and the Metro Lots that we, we operate with their permission or in this case um M W R D. So the other municipalities do provide insurance, but they do it by adding to their current or existing uh, general comprehensive liability policy.
Well, could I amend, a move to amend this emotion to uh adopt renewal option four, which is the lowest cost seventeen thousand, three hundred and six dollar annual premium. That does include bike path exposure.
Counsel?
I'd rather just negotiate the deal again.
You can make a motion, like, if I could look at that, that the um, the option for just a moment, Alderman?
Sure.
You can. I'm just concerned because if it's, if they're adding that much just to cover the trail, there's gotta be a reason.
Yep.
Just to give some comparative here and, and maybe because I got the history with it. We do not have, like, like the attorney said, umbrella policies, insurance. This idea came from M W R D. I don't like it. I don't like option A, B, C or D. I don't like the entire lease. So I can go wherever the council goes with this. I'm not, I agree. I don't want to be out there liable either. I was more fighting the entire lease deal, making us get the insurance. Other towns do not have to do it. That was coming from M W R D. We have this lease that's making us get it. So I was in favor of just walking away from the lease and renegotiating the lease. But I'm reporting what the council decided on. So I just
For some reason.
owning this, I'm just stating my own personal biases against the lease, not so much the insurance. Want to make that very clear.
I, I understand Alderman Bellato and I, I tend to agree with you, but is there, do we have to vote on this tonight?
Well, I, I think the policy, the extension that was granted to the city on the existing policy expires October, if I'm not mistaken, October third. It could be a little bit later than that, but prior to our next meeting, they, they granted a thirty day extension, if I'm not mistaken, Alderman Theronwell. But to answer your original question, you could make that motion to amend. It would have to be either Alderman Bellato would have to withdraw his motion and allow you to make the motion.
I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw mine. I'll make this easy. I withdraw mine, but I want priority renegotiate the lease because I'm happy that we're gonna take on this additional burden and just, I, I'll give you back my example. I was on the park board for twelve years. Our entire policy for the entire year for all liability for all thirteen parks was like thirty-three thousand dollars. And I know we're not in that situation. They have an umbrella liability policy with other park districts. But it was just, when I saw eighteen thousand dollars, I'm like, this whole lease is just, we're not getting the right. And we, we have to pay five thousand, keep the bios farm open, so we didn't do anything with that. And every time we want to do a dragon boat race, we have to pay a permit fee. I mean, it's just, it's just, I have a lot of bias because it's in my backyard and then the maintenance and liability and anybody walking over the bridge can just jump in the bridge. It's no different than if M W R D owns it or we owned it. So I'm fine with withdrawing the motion. I don't, whatever the council wants to decide, I just have a bias with the entire lease.
If, if, if Alderman Bellato withdraws his motion and Alderman Theronwell, you can make your motion to approve renewal option four with, with the, the hopes that um Admiral and uh Kinseal, well, Kinseal's still there, but the insurance company with the hopes that Admiral, uh, whatever they're called, Admiral Insurance will still extend, still extend that commitment, okay?
All right, well, I, I'll make that, I'll make that motion then to uh adopt re- renewal option for Admiral Insurance, seventeen thousand, three hundred and six dollars.
There's a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions? If not, roll call.
Yes, yes, I do.
Go ahead.
This is Alder, this is Alderman Johnson. This is something uh council, council members that I've been asking for for years for not to be self-insured because this is what, this is a catch twenty-two we find ourselves in. Especially with all the lawsuits we have caught in the last fifteen years is because we're, we're self-insured. That's why we don't have any money. So I've been fighting for the good, not to be self-insured and pay just a little more, so we wouldn't have to absorb all this extra stuff.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Uh, roll call, please.
Holly.
Well, uh, Mayor, the, the motion would, the motion would then be to approve a resolution authorizing an insurance contract with Kinseal Insurance Company and Admiral Insurance Company for property and excess liability insurance for the city of Blue Island for the property leased from the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago. And it would be approving option number four as stated on exhibit A.
So, so noted. Uh, roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Theronwell.
Hi.
Theronwell, hi, Hill.
Hi.
Hill, hi, Mac.
Hi.
Mac, hi, Zelman. Zelman, hi, Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi, Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi, Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi, Bellato.
What up, Stane? I think you got the votes, right? Do I have to need an I? I don't want this to fail.
Uh, there, there are seven eyes, so.
I'll make an eye. I'll vote.
All right, then I get to explain just my word. I'm representing my word. I'd like to renegotiate that lease.
Well, there were eight, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Bellato wants no thing.
Yeah, and I wanna renegotiate that lease. I'd like that in the minutes too, because I've been harping on that. It's like Carthage must be destroyed at the Roman Senate.
I'm, I'm, I'm behind you on that, Alderman Bellato.
Yeah, we should definitely renegotiate for sure.
The, the total is, the tally is eight, eyes, one no, and one extension.
Correct. All right. Thank you.
Um, then the last resolution uh, for issuance of a statement of self-insurance.
We won't need that, right?
It will not be necessary, correct.
Okay. I'm done with my report. All right, I'm done, Mayor.
All right, uh, Public Health and Safety Committee?
Yep, I got a couple of two months reports, so bear with me here, everyone. So uh, this is the Public Health and Safety Meeting from July twenty first. President, or Fairwell, Johnson, Casares, Clinker, Hill, Stevo, Chief Rita, Chief Arzev, and Kevin Brown. Absent was Alderman Carr. A motion was made by Alderman Hill, seconded by Clinker to approve the minutes from the June sixteenth meeting. Roll call vote was held. All in favor, motion carried. Public comment from Gerald the Pace Green regarding various city property maintenance issues, improper city spending, and the need for ALS ambulance service. Under Fire Department Business, Chief Rita presented his June twenty twenty report. Um, I'm gonna list two hundred and seventy-one EMS responses, one hundred and twenty-two fire, eleven auto aid, and one mutual aid. The ambulance reimbursement collected forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents for the month. Year-to-date total, two thirty-seven, two fifty-four point nine six. Fire recovery collected one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents for the month. Year-to-date total, twelve thousand, three fourteen point six eight. False alarm fees, zero, collected zero for the month. Year-to-date total, seven hundred. Under calls of interest, the chief reported they were very busy for fires that month. They had a, an apartment at twenty-four, uh, apartment fired, twenty-four forty Oak. They assisted Riverdale, Cal Park, South Holland, Riverdale again, and Posen, all with structured fires during that month. Under general information, Chief Rita reported he's continuing with the COVID nineteen task force and informing elected officials regularly. Their P P supply was holding up. The regional grant of approximately sixty-three thousand dollars for P P was awarded to the Mavis twenty-two division. That will be spent on P P and shared between the division members. Uh, the truck's still out of service. The ladder's fixed. Now it had a radiator problem. Chief warned of the need to start looking at a vehicle replacement program. The boat was out of the water, but is in service as it was waiting parts for the bilge pump. Uh, ambulance twenty-one sixty-two is out of service with an electrical issue and is in for repairs. They were doing fire prevention. Uh, he also reported monthly training hours of four hundred and eighty-nine hours for the month. Overtime cost six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-one cents. Um, under old business, we started, uh, kept continuing our discussion on the ALS upgrade. Uh, chief gave some basics on upgrading to ALS service. The cost of upgrading equipment is roughly one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. He also discussed manpower and classes. The department has a roster of twenty-seven, of which twelve or thirteen are already ALS certified. He mentioned a few options to start service while the members are being trained. Uh, tuition's roughly five thousand per person, so sending four per year would cost us about twenty grand in tuition. There would also be overtime costs involved. Um, he mentioned a need for a capital improvement plan to replace ambulances and other fire vehicles. He has advised Director Carthen of these needs. Uh, he's been talking about that a lot, just so everyone knows. I mean, this goes back to last year when we were in appropriation, so that's gonna keep coming up. Um, there was a consensus among committee members to send this issue to finance for further review and action. Um, under G E M T I G A discussion, the chief reported on the G E M T I G A, um, which is something he's working with Director Carthen on completing the application. Uh, this would allow the city to collect additional funds above Medicare, above what Medicare or Medicaid pay. This could potentially bring in an additional one hundred thousand dollars or more in revenue annually. Um, he mentioned this could possibly go towards vehicle replacement. Alderman Stevo asked the chief about when he was planning on, when he was planning on purchasing a new ambulance. Chief reported the department is busy and will need to look at replacing rigs soon. He said he's all, he's always looking for grants. He stated Director Carthen is aware of the department's needs regarding vehicles. Mr. Stevo stated the department needed to buy two new ambulances now. Uh, there was a consensus among committee members to send this issue to the finance committee for further review and action. Alderman Stevo, Stevo asked Chief Rita to get the numbers for two new ambulances. Chief Rita mentioned the informant station two is broken. That's what sets off the alert down there and is gonna need to be replaced at a cost of two hundred to eight hundred dollars. Um, under Police Department Business, uh, Chief Arzev reported there's a uh, probation officer Holloway completed his field training. Probationary Officer Julio Puma is at the Macon County Training Center. Sergeant Nedved had returned from, to active duty from his injury. Current staffing was thirty-three. Eisenhour was advised that we would not be able to supply a school resource officer due to staffing levels. Um, part, part-time officers will continue providing assistance when needed. And the Animal Welfare League had notified the department of possible suspension or cancellation of taking animals from our department due to potential new Chicago Ridge ordinance. Under revenues, they collected thirty-nine thousand, sixty-two dollars and sixty-two cents for the month. There were three thousand, sixty-six incidents, six firearms recovered, two FZO deployments, forty-three ordinances uh, were written for illegal firework possession between June thirteenth and July eighth. A hundred and two point two, I'm sorry, a hundred and two point eight two hours of training. Uh, overtime cost of nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. The department is currently researching body worn camera program. Estimated cost for everything needed is about fifteen thousand dollars per year. Um, they're also researching a transition to Lexus Nexus E crash and request the report system. Uh, cases of interest, there were four separate incidents involving a discharge of firearm. Investigations were all ongoing at that time. Evidence had been collected and sent to the crime lab. Um, under new business, we discussed concerns that Alderman had about the waterfall park down there at Chademan Fulton, both on safety and cleanliness. Um, this was brought up by Alderman Casares to start the conversation. Um, there was a discussion regarding the safety and maintenance of a waterfall park and surrounding areas. Alderman Casares reported broken glass misuse by adult individuals, trash, and enforcement hours of operation and the closure of the park at sunset. Chief Arzev suggested better signage regarding hours of operation, no littering, et cetera. She also suggested tree trimming, better lighting, possible residential permit parking signs on Fulton Street as ways to improve the area. Chief asked if there was any agreement with the M W R D for policing the park area. Alderman Casares suggested a nightly patrol of the parking lot in the park. Alderman Casares spoke of the trash left in the park and the surrounding area and parking lots. Chief Arzev stated the P D does patrol the lots and advises people to leave the park if they see them there after hours. Alderman Johnson suggesting having someone get ahold of M W R D to see what they can do with help with these issues. And Alderman Stevo, um, asked if we could have M W R D install security cameras. Um, Alderman Clinker stated he would email the mayor, municipal services chairperson Carr, community development chairperson Bellato regarding these suggestions. Clerk Coiser suggested adding Mark Miller to this email. So I sent that email out back in whatever that was, July. Um, we approved the Lexus Nexus agreement, which I, I know has since gone all, all the way through council, so I think you guys are all aware of that. And uh, Alderman Steve West, it was reviewed by the attorney, which it was. We had a roll call vote. That motion carried. Um, we approved the Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center. That's something that also, it's also gone through council already. Uh, another roll call vote, all in favor. Um, on Alderman's concerns, Alderman Casares mentioned an increase in minibikes and A T Vs in his ward. He asked if they were illegal on the streets. Chief Arzev responded yes and asked for people to call and report them. Alderman Fairwell asked about the city sticker enforcement. Chief Arzev advised the department will begin enforcement in mid-August. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Hill, seconded by Casares. Favor motion carried. Our next meeting was August eighteenth. All right. Next page. This is the August eighteenth meeting. Um, present were Alderman Fairwell, Johnson, Casares, Hill, Clinker, Carr, Stevo, Chief Rita, and Chief Arzev. Uh, motion was made by Hill, seconded by Fairwell to approve the minutes from the June twenty twenty meeting. Alderman Stevo stated he had not received a copy of the minutes, so we held off on approving them until he got a copy. Um, under public comment, Mike Cindy sent a letter regarding clarification of the city's overnight parking ordinance and secondly, asking how the police department enforces the lack of vehicles stickers, stickers on vehicles in town. Um, try to keep this as short as I can, but also make sure I got everything in it. So Chief Rita presented his June, July twenty twenty report. Three hundred and five EMS responses, one hundred and sixty-three fire, sixteen auto aid and zero mutual aid. Ambulance collections, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and one cent for the month. Year-to-date total, two sixty-seven, eight sixty-seven point nine seven. Fire recovery collected one thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and twenty-four cents. Year-to-date total, fourteen, one two oh point nine two. False fire alarm fees collected zero. Year-to-date total was still at seven hundred. Uh, cause of interest, they had a truck fire, a structure fire in Riverdale, and they assisted the state police with a body recovery at the Cal Sag in James Street. And there are also multiple EMS and car accidents that happened. Um, under general information, chief was still reporting to everyone with the COVID task force. Firefighter Cook had resigned from the department. Uh, under maintenance, the truck is still out of service. It now had a rear torque rod snapped. Um, the chief once again warned of the need to start looking at vehicle replacement program very soon. The boat was still out of the water, but was in service waiting parts for the bilge pump. And the ambulance twenty-one sixty-two was still out of service with an electric issue and other repairs. Um, under other, they're still doing pre, pre-plans for fire prevention and training report showed four hundred and forty point seven five hours. Overtime cost for the month was five thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and twenty cents. Um, COVID nineteen preparation and response were ongoing. Bear with me here, sorry. Under um, old business, the ALS upgrade discussion continued. Um, the chief had sent a cover letter to the committee members earlier in the day regarding upgrading to ALS service. He listed two options to move forward with ALS service. The first option would be hire twelve additional firefighters, four per shift. This would obviously be the cost of this option. The second option would be to initiate a silver spanner program, which would utilize other I A F F firefighters from the area to supplement our nine current medics in staffing while department members go through paramedic school. Chief would like to send eleven members to school over a three-year period. There will be increased costs, and the chief stated we will have to calculate the costs of implementing either option. Future hires will be required to be ALS certified at the time of testing. The next paramedic class does not start until January of twenty twenty-one. The class is gonna take poss, nine months to possibly a year, um, to complete, possibly longer due to COVID restrictions. He would also like to send four members to medic school. Uh, the cost of upgrading equipment is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which may be eligible to be paid through CARES Act money, which we have since found out it is eligible. He talked about that the other night. Um, he provided a spreadsheet with potential labor costs associated with the upgrade. They include sixty thousand, five hundred dollars for tuition, forty-five thousand dollars stipend for current medics, a hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars for a silver spanner program, and unknown cost to cover overtime while students are in class to cover during practical exams, et cetera. Uh, there are many variables in his proposal. Chief stated he would like to have a sit-down with the union to agree to whatever proposal we came up with. He also mentioned changing our building ordinance and raising our EMS rates soon. He recommended purchasing a new ambulance and initiating a replacement program to replace the other two ambulances. This would cost between two hundred and twenty and three hundred thousand dollars. He's looking into getting an ambulance to the CARES Act as well, and then he answered some questions that the Alderman had. Um, these included what schools are open, the length of classes, what was the silver spanner program. Alderman Clinker stated we need to move forward with the upgrade and we need to get a better handle on the associated costs to do so. Alderman Fairwell agreed and stated we need to come up with a good recommendation. He asked about a temporary fix of running one ALS and one BLS ambulance until we got the state staff certified. Chief believed that was a possibility and will research it further. Alderman Stevo asked about the status of the hospital. Chief Rita stated they are still on hold. They're waiting to see if there's a need to utilize it in the event of an increase in COVID patients in the fall. The state controls the status of that building. There's a consensus among committee members to send this issue to finance committee for further review and action. Alderman Clinker asked the chief to work with the finance director Carthen and the union to come up with better cost estimates for the program. All right, under police business, chief reported probationary officer Julio Puma continues his basic law enforcement training at Macon County Training Center. Expected graduation is October second. Patrol officer Nancy Bailey completed her eighteen-month probation. Current staffing was at thirty-three. The department has been begun targeted enforcement of Blue Island vehicle sticker and overnight parking ordinances. Uh, revenue streams collected fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents for July. Three thousand, sixteen incidents, three firearms recovered, three FZO deployments for the month, thirty-three training hours. Uh, overtime cost was twelve thousand, six thirty-four point seven zero. The department has begun training with the Lexus Nexus E crash platform. Under cases of interest, back in July, there's an aggravated battery with a firearm at one thirty-three, hundred Old Western. The investigation is ongoing. And an aggravated battery in the twenty-eight hundred block of one hundred and forty-first. Arrest was made and the offender was charged accordingly. Under miscellaneous, eighteen, minibike offenders around Broadway and Old Western were apprehended. The vehicles were impounded. Targeted traffic enforcement was conducted around one hundred and fortieth and Francisco, resulting in eleven, eleven traffic stops, four citations, and seven warnings. Alderman Casares stated the minibikes and A T Vs keep popping up in the area and asked if the city could put warnings on the website informing residents that they're illegal to use on the streets. That has since been done by the chief. Um, Alderman Fairwell praised the effort of city sticker efforts. The enforcement of city sticker efforts and reminded citizens the police also have other responsibilities that might be more pressing. Alderman Fairwell asked if there was an ordinance regarding neighbors smoking marijuana and the smoke blowing into a neighbor's yard. Chief Arzev stated she was not aware of one. Alderman Hill left the meeting at that time. Um, regarding overnight parking enforcement, the chief stated an officer would run the license plate of a vehicle through the department leads interface and the secretary of, State of Illinois Secretary of State. If the plate comes back registered to any town other than Blue Island, the vehicle will then be issued a citation for the overnight parking violation. City sticker enforcement has begun, and there have been almost nine hundred citations issued for these two items since August fourth to the date of this meeting. Alderman Stevo stated there was something wrong with the ordinance since the vehicle sticker was applied and a ticket was issued. He asked where it said a vehicle had to be registered in Blue Island to purchase a city sticker for it. Alderman Clinker suggested running this question through the judiciary committee meeting, since it is a legal question and the attorney attends them. Um, under old business, um, back to the waterfall park again. Alderman Casares would like to move forward with some of the committee's suggestions regarding safety and cleanliness of the park. Alderman Clinker stated he had sent an email to the mayor, clerk, public works supervisor, police chief, community development committee, municipal service committee, and Mark Miller with a list of ideas the committee came up with. The only resp, response received was from the clerk with a map of the property and a copy of the lease of the property and who owns what portions. And Alderman Carr stated the public works does not have sufficient manpower to clean up the debris and maintain the park area. Alderman Casares once again asked for signage to be posted. Uh, hang on one second. To be posted as a start. Alderman Clinker said it will resend the email to the above people again. Under new business, Alderman Hill had requested a discussion on the city's plan regarding looting and civil unrest. He had, uh, left the meeting by this point in time, so we really weren't quite sure where he was going with that, but Chief Arzev reassured the committee and citizens that the police department does have protocols in place, works with multiple agencies to deal with these issues, and are prepared to deal with them. Under Alderman's concerns, Alderman Hill had requested a discussion of the fifth ward rain gardens maintenance as it relates to public health. Um, Alderman Carr stated that Mark Miller informed her that Green Thumb would be cleaning up the rain garden as early as the next day. Uh, motion was made at seven sixteen to adjourn by Alderman Fairwell, seconded by Casares. Roll call vote was held. All in favor, motion carried. Our next meeting was September fifteenth, twenty twenty, which was last week. I should have those meetings minutes by next meeting, and our next meeting is October twentieth, six P M, um, on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you much, thank you very much, Alderman. Municipal Services Committee? Nothing? Hello?
Alderman Carr's not here.
Right, all right. So move on. Uh, Judiciary Committee?
Um, I'm going to read the, the um, agenda for Alderman Rita. She has surgery today and she cannot be here. I do not have the minutes. She said she'll have them for the next meeting. I believe we need to approve the property damage twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-nine. Um, I think Bob's auto, we have to pay, like, there's large dead scratches on the driver's side, the front fender from the forklift. It was an accident, I believe, out with the city vehicle, and the city attorney told us to, you should approve it.
All right. I need a motion and a second?
Auto move.
Okay.
And, is there a second?
A second.
Alderman? All right, thank you. Any, any question? If not, a roll call, please.
Holly, I'm a, I'm a damage claim.
Hi.
Alderman, hi, Fairwell.
Hi.
Fairwell, hi, Hill.
Hi.
Hill, hi, Mac.
Nice.
Mac, hi, Zelman.
Hi.
Zelman, hi, Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi, Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Ten i's, your honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, number two. I believe this one, uh, Alderman Clinker was talking about ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero three six. In order to the city of Blue Island, county Illinois, Mendee, Chapter seventy-three, or the code of Blue Island regarding vehicle recently.
So we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Auto seconds.
Uh, any question? If not, roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Fairwell.
Hi.
Fairwell, hi, Hill.
Hi.
Hill, hi, Mac.
Hi.
Mac, hi. Zelman.
Hi.
Zelman, hi, Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi, Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi. Ten i's, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Number three, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero three seven, in order designing resident parking upon a portion of a certain street for the city of Blue Island, county Illinois, and providing penalties for those violations there. I believe.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Auto second.
All right, uh, any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Who, who drafted this ordinance?
I can't tell you. I don't know that answer. I'm just reading. Sorry. She, you were at the meeting with us and we all voted on it. We changed it with you in it, right? With your recommendation, I believe?
Yes, but I'm asking who drafted it. Uh, Mr. Horvath, is this your work? Did you draft this?
No, I did not draft either one of the two ordinances being presented.
All right, uh, any other question?
Did you have a chance to review it, uh, Mr. Horvath?
I reviewed it after I, it was drafted. I was not asked for my opinion after it was drafted, no.
Uh, could you share your opinion with us tonight? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I I would, you know, I I don't know the reason for this particular ordinance. I I don't know why it was requested. I, you know, if, if, if the ordinance is designed to uh permit uh, is, are we talking about the ordinance involved with the, the registration of vehicles?
No, this is the parking and residential area.
In the residential area? I I don't know the genesis of this ordinance, other than if it was designed to prevent uh, abuse of parking by people who work at um the Cook County Hospital. That may well have been the reason, but no, I was not asked to participate in the preparation of this ordinance. Uh, it is a residential parking ordinance. It, it's in a form which is familiar to me because I used to use it years ago when I was the city attorney uh, before I left uh to practice with Odelson and Stirk. Do I know why all of these various streets were requested for resident parking only? Uh, no, I do not. But as a, as an ordinance prohibiting parking in residential areas, the format is fine, Alderman Stevo. I I hope that answers your question. I I don't have an opinion, though, one way or the other.
Yes, uh, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, roll call, please.
It, I'm sorry, uh, chief.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is Alderman Johnson. Is it for, are we talking about the area around uh um the Cook County Hospital, or are we talking about the whole city?
This is just around Cook County Hospital.
Thank you.
And to incorporate the, the parking grounds that were hit by ravens.
Thanks. Roll, roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Fairwell.
Hi.
Fairwell, hi, Hill.
Hi.
Hill, hi, Mac.
Hi.
Mac, hi, Zelman.
Hi.
Zelman, hi, Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi, Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi, ten i's, your honor.
Thank you very much.
And that's all I have.
Anything else, Alderman?
No, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. We move on to number seven. Any Aldermanic announcements or comments?
Fairwell has one.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to make another note about the payables tonight. Um, it, it needs to be remarked that we also approved a one hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-nine cent payment, which I guess is number, payment number four in seven payments to uh the, um, well, to be familiar with it, to the uh family of the young boy Robbie who was killed some time ago and um, part of an ongoing problem the city has had with transparency and honesty, and it's costing us a tremendous amount of money. Um, and it's uh, it was, it's unfortunate. All the way around, the young boy's life was lost, and it's costing the city millions of dollars.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Anybody else?
Uh, yes, this is Alderman Johnson. Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, doing appropriations, if we could look out for not being self insured so we can be insured uh, for many reasons such as uh what Fair, Alderman Fairwell.
I, I will so note it. Uh, anybody else? Go ahead.
There was no one here.
Anybody?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yes, a motion. Do we have a second? And then we'll need a roll call, please. All right, roll call.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Fairwell.
Hi.
Fairwell, hi, Hill.
Hi.
Hill, hi, Mac.
Hi.
Mac, hi. Zelman. Zelman, hi, Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi, Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi, ten i's, your honor.
Thank you very much. Everyone be safe. You and your families and everybody else in the residence as well. Thank you.